At this time, I'll call the Dixon County Commission meeting to order for January 13th, 2022. Would you please stand and join in the flags salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have our agenda and we do have a couple of things. Brad, I might ask you, do we need to put that on for the non-judicial member to be appointed?
I need to check with him first, make sure he's doing that.
That's right. Okay, so we'll do that later. Okay. So the one item we do have is to go ahead and consider the approval of a Solomon contract for police services of 2022, and we will add that to the agenda. And I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the January 6th meeting, also prior year expenditures of 140,600, or I'll start over on that, $140,563.23. Current year of $576,292.60. Escape tax of $727.32. Added tax of $585.66. Abatements of $7,122.16. SD security wire, $2,632.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Could someone tell me on the escape tax, is that why the sheriff is here? Is it something to do with the jail? What is the escape tax? Could you tell me?
Yes, Leah said we got an intangible that was never put on the tax deal. So she said that's considered an escape tax. Added taxes, tax we add, the abatements are what we take off, but those have.
It's the opposite of an abatement.
So once it was discovered, we go, this is the way to correct it and take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, it has not been on here, so.
We have remained.
I appreciate the explanation. We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Commission comments, Ron.
I just real quickly want to thank the road crews for doing a great job for getting those roads and streets ready for this ice and snow we had and no accidents out there, and it looked pretty nice. I want to compliment them on that.
And you know, even this morning in our meeting, Martin mentioned, you know, about the preparation that they make and anticipate, but those road crew people, they're out there at all hours. And it's greatly appreciated. Yes. Craig?
Yeah, I had a gentleman get ahold of me in person in Noble Township. Wanted to know who my Noble Township's motor operator was, and I said, I didn't know, but I'd find out for him. Long story short, I got hold of Gary Hall then, and he's going to get in touch with it. It's there on, or interstate on Quail Road back when they built it. There's a 38th pasture there that they've never accessed, and there was a gate down there, and Gary didn't even know it was there. So he's going to get ahold of Nolan Mills. Some way to get, because there's a, they cut down about that far. And if they cut it down to go there, the water will just run down there and create problems. So that's all I have.
Okay. We did have a special meeting for the Central Kansas Mental Health with board over at, it's held at Sling County, but it's made up of area counties. And we have a new director that they're going to announce this week. The other director had resigned and needed to kind of take care of some of her family and also kind of was at a retirement type stage of her life. So I expect that to be a very smooth and seamless transition. That's all I have. We'll go to our reports, well, before reports of county officers, we have a couple of things. We do have a presentation and some guests here today from the Dixon County Community Foundation. And the spokesperson for your group seems they're both looking at you, Veronica.
Well, I wasn't really in for the meetings. I'm sure Janelle or Craig could probably say more about this. This is not feeling well today, so she felt it was best to stay home. But we're pleased to help sponsor a $25,000 grant for our justice program that the counties, that each judicial district, is that right?
Correct. Be direct, it'd be kind of startup money, seed money. Once it's going, it's supposed to be self-funded, but we don't have funds there at this time to kick it off the ground. I shouldn't say we don't have, it takes funds that we haven't allocated to get it going.
So this will help you all get started, and after that, it's pretty well self-funded.
Supposedly.
But it's a good partnership, and it's important as far as this drug court. I know Judge Sexton seems very enthused about it, that it's a good positive step and something that will certainly have a positive effect. And so we appreciate your support. And do you want to have a photo of that? Oh, we're standing by the flag and symbol of safety.
It's an official photo op, yeah.
Are we pulling that like that?
Yeah, yeah. I want to make sure I'm receiving them, or they know we're receiving them on behalf of the county.
Do we want to take them down?
I think you can take them down.
Hope you press now.
We don't want to think it's a robbery.
Good. I guess you get that.
That didn't bounce.
No, you didn't.
It's an elbow.
How you doing, Brad?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, guys. Good luck. See you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow.
Of course, one of the benefits of the community foundation is you do have so many people locally that have made that possible through their contributions. And then they're able to disperse funds to places where there's great needs and opportunities. And so it's a good investment in community. Okay, we do not have any other items here, other than if there would be any public comments. I don't know if we have anyone that's indicated that they would want to speak up. But, and so we'll go ahead and move on. And Brad, if you'll go ahead and give your report.
Sure. Okay, as you noted in the work session, the retirement reception from Marty Hall is separate February 31st. In his room from 11:02 for helping grow. An update, well, second meeting, we are planning on having the North Central Kansas County Highway Officials Association meeting this year. It will be in Ellsworth, assuming that they're willing to host it. On April 6th. And I've reached out to them, I haven't heard back from them yet, but we're trying to get that scheduled. I did talk to Tom Clausen, who is our vice president, because the president didn't survive the election. And we haven't had a meeting since to elect a new president, and Tom is certainly interested in having it. So barring any extremely big COVID issues, we're going to have that. And so all we can do is we get close to that date on what's going on. Just a little update on the construction. We had a two-week meeting on Monday. As I said again, in the work session, a lot of things moving, and we're really seeing some progress. Things are, we're starting to see the fruits of the efforts come together. If you were to walk into courthouse today, on the top floor, everything's been cleaned up. The ceilings ran. The tile was in all of the bathrooms, it gets tile, ceramic tile. And the courtroom, they were scheduled to start staining the woodwork in the. Today, and then they will move over and work on the small courtroom. If you were to go in a small courtroom, which is where the old jail used to be. The walls have been painted, the ceiling griser in, and they were putting the lights and stuff in in a hurried manner, trying to get it ready so they can prep the floors and get the carpet down. We've got a couple of weeks until the pews show up in both courtrooms to get those installed. So those are progressing well. The district court area for them is also coming along with the seating grid and lights being in and getting ready to prep that floor as well. If you go down to the basement, dispatch is probably the area that's the farthest along, and intentionally so. We are planning on receiving the furniture, their dispatch furniture, which is a specialized furniture for them next Wednesday, it's showing up, and will be installed by the vendor that does that. So we have to have the carpet and everything in that room and prep to go at that point. The following week on Wednesdays, when we are moving dispatch. And as you heard me say before, that's a trip challenge. We will get it done, we always do, but it takes a lot to move the technology that they have functioning and to keep it operating at the same time. You obviously can't shut dispatch down, take time to move it and turn it back on. So we have to be able to answer those calls. So we'll move one station, get it functional, then we come back and move the other station. So we always have these two dispatchers that's functioning, handle the call load, and the emergency calls that come in. So, but as you heard Emily say, they're really looking forward to that. Out of all of the offices, I know everybody's been, had challenges throughout this whole project, but those four dispatchers have had the most, without a doubt. Not only being in a garage, but having construction going on around them, having water and pieces of debris falling on their head. You know, every hole in the floor that originally had a piece of plumbing or pipe or crack above them where the old jail used to be, and there were plenty. When they were doing the demolition, when they were doing the construction, when they were cleaning, anything they were doing, that stuff was coming down on the dispatchers. And so at one point, I think they were joking and wearing hard hats and that. But they've endured through it and done a bang-up job, and they're looking forward to getting moved back in. We can move them now because we don't have to, they're not a public office. So we don't have to worry about giving them public access. Everything they do is done by phone and radio. So we'll move them so that we can get the contractors and start working on that garage area. Because as you know, that becomes your meeting room and a public meeting room, or an extra conference room, whatever we can use it for. So with that, you know, if you go to the main floor and so on, that's the farthest behind or needs the most work, the countertops, the public counters in Leah's area and Jenny's area and the clerkage dredger's area are, were installed this week. They look exceptionally nice. Really pleased with the way those turned out. And they'll start doing the ceiling grid next week in that area, because all the plumbing and stuff is done. And once you put the grid in, you put the lights in, and the tile went, and that's when things really start to shape up. And then they'll come back in doing carpeting after that. So I think we're, the timeline is in your packet. It hasn't changed from the last one I gave you, but we're still looking at, you know, the end of February when everything is completed and to, at that point, be able to plan moving justice back in. So still, we did hear from the elevator company. We don't have a set date at this point, but they're estimating, they're probably looking at April to be able to get in or renovate the elevator. Our plan is to clean it up, make it look somewhat presentable. It is still functioning. It has gone down two or three times during the construction. We had to have people come in and use some paper clips and some gum wrappers to get it back up and running. So we're going to continue to use it. And then in that period, when they do the renovation, we'll try to narrow that window down as much as possible. But even though courthouse is open, that elevator will be closed for probably a week or 10 days. You know, it's really no different than in the past when it broke down and it was closed for a week, and we couldn't use it. So it's not like the world comes to an end. If someone is disabled or handicapped and can't negotiate stairs, we'll have the staff from the basement or from the upper floor come down and meet them. We'll make accommodations during that period of time. That's just going to be the only way we can deal with it. So rather than waiting and waiting with the courthouse is completely done, and the only thing we wait on is the elevator.
So. Let me ask you this. I know Jerry doesn't want him coming into the jail to go up, but.
We could escort someone back and take them up through the secure corridor if we had to.
Yeah, because that corridor doesn't actually come into the jail, right? It's secure, but it doesn't come into the jail.
So if somebody needed to, we could get them up that way to the second floor. If they were going to be there and see for a court proceeding that's going to go all day or something, we can do that. Yeah, so. So anyhow, things are progressing. And I will, for next week, I'll have a video to show you. So I am going to a Rotary meeting, so a couple of guys will get to see some of those before next Thursday. But I was asked to present next Wednesday at the Rotary, and so I'll show them a few key slides of that and where we've come from and where we're at. And so I'll repeat that for you guys next Thursday morning here. So in your packet, you've got a little report that Diane presented. You know, we talked about staffing and personnel and value of that. Here's the service. And I asked Diane to put together a chart on just how many years of service we have with county staff. You know, we have 143 county employees currently. And remarkably, we have 1,106 years of service amongst those people. That's a lot of investment. That's a lot of experience that the county residents get to the benefit every day. So I'm really proud to be able to say that. I think that goes to show that the county is a good place to work. We do have a bunch of dedicated 10-year employees, even though some of us are retiring now. But even Marty, 25 years, that's nothing to stop at, you know. And Barb retired when 75 or whatever she had. You know, Andy Barton, the same way. So you know, it's not just a job, it's a career, and it's something you commit to. And we are really proud to be able to say that that's the number of years of experience that we have to serve the residents of our county. So I did attend the Grant Township Board meeting Tuesday night for the purpose of discussing the issue on 2100 Avenue with Ted and Jan Sexton. Martin and I attended that. The meeting went very well. At the end of the meeting, Jan was there and she was provided options of possibly doing a chip seal in that 400 or 500 feet of section in front of their house. And then also reducing the speed limit, and a combination of both of those. And so I explained to the township how we could impose a speed limit in that area and that process of how they would petition you. And then we would do a brief traffic study and come back with a resolution for you to consider. And I did receive that request yesterday from the township. And so Martin's going to be doing some checking out there and possibly as soon as next Thursday. We would have a resolution for you to consider to impose a speed limit on that section of road. We think, and I'll go into it in detail then, but we think that by lowering the speed limit, that will help a little bit. If Mother Nature would give us any substantial moisture, that would help tremendously. And then possibly in the future, if need be, we could look at the cost of, a cost share between the property owner and the township of putting up something similar to what that we did down on Union Road with the quarry, was a chip seal. You don't typically chip seal gravel roads. It can be done. And there's concessions that go along with it, but it might be an option to take care of the dust issues there. So we'll be back with more information.
Well, I see the problem there is, I shouldn't say the problem, you did it for one, it's not going to end.
We discussed that in length, and here's what I told them. You know, and Jan said, you know, they're willing to have skin in the game, you know, to whatever degree they can. If you look at the overall longevity of lifespan of chip seal, we figured that probably on that road with the traffic, maybe five years, give or take a year or so, depending, weather dependent. The township, even though it's a small section of the road, that 500 feet's going to have maintenance investment there that no longer is going to be done, because once you chip seal that, you can't touch it for that period of time. So there's going to be a savings involved of, let's say, $300 a year. I'm just spinning. And so if it's going to cost $1,000 a year, and we figured it would take about $5,000 to chip seal that. And so you break that up, $1,000 a year, the township is saving 300. So if they took the 300 that they would save and invested, and the landowner paid the other seven, then it's really revenue or it's cost neutral to the township. So when somebody comes in, another landowner says, wait a minute, you did it for that land, that property owner. Say, well, we'll do it for you, same formula. We'll invest what we wouldn't be doing otherwise, you pay the rest. That is kind of your defense on that, I think. So whether or not they agree with that, I don't know, but that was my suggestion to them. Because that is a big thing. It's same way with us. If we partner with the township, we've got 23 other kids that are going to come to the table, want us to do it for them too. I mean, that is a legitimate concern. So I think they all understood that, you know, it'll be a question of whether or not they're willing to put that much skin in the game or not. So, but she left the meeting, I think, pleased that we were willing to do something. And the speed limit, I think, will help considerably. And with that, that bridge being cockeyed in the road, no longer does, speed is an issue out there. And as we saw, we just saw a serious accident out there with some kids here a month or two ago, and might be indicative of that factor. So, but we'll do what we can, and I think the township's willing to work with them within their ability. And I think Jen got that feeling. So hopefully, we can, we can make things better for them out there, don't have to break the bank on either party. So that's all I had today.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
We're working on the tax sale still, and our plan is that we hope to be able to have the tax sale in late March or early April. The sheriff department was kind enough to let us use their facility. And it'll be out in front of the area. It's a good location for the public to be able to be at to sign up for the tax sale and be bidders at it. We don't have the exact date, but we will pretty quickly. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Under notices and communications, we have a few. I'll mention earlier today that we did have our department had an elected officials meeting at 10 o'clock. And those that were in attendance and some joined online were able to give updates for their departments and some of the things they had going on. Also gives us opportunity to ask them a few questions as they come to mind. Under notices and communications, we have from the KDHE, they sent us out a notice that they always do, and this one is on a permit for cattle. And it's for an existing facility for 500 head of cattle, 700 pounds or less. And this is for Dawn and Mark Beethy, and their operation is 712 Hawk Road, Pope, Kansas. And so we received that notification. We also have a magazine that we received, Government Technology. And then also from Atmos Energy on, just on some of the gas services that they could provide. Is there, were there any other notifications that anyone would want to bring up or that they have? Anyone come in just now? No. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any resolutions to consider or, and there's no unfinished business. Under other business, we do have a contract with the sheriff's department with the city of Solomon. Brad?
I'll let Jerry pick that one. He's been with them, has the details.
Yeah. We contract service, law enforcement services for the city of Solomon every year. And every year, we reevaluate the contract. I met with them Monday at their meeting, and I proposed the contract. It's basically the same contract as last year. I've got a spreadsheet that I compiled that allows me to determine the costs to operate. I presented them with that spreadsheet. I think the cost went up between $3 and $4 a month, is all it went up for the year. So they agreed that the term would be from February 1st of this year through the 31st, and we'd have another contract after the 31st. City's going to be responsible for paying $9,465.93 per month. A total of $113,591.16 per year for law enforcement services. The only addition to that, this is for 200 hours contracted. There's also a provision in there that the booking fee, the fee we charge to book somebody into our facility, as well as the housing fee, which is the daily fee we charge per inmate to house for jurisdiction, that went up from $35 to $45. They've signed off on that. They're agreeable to that. I presented the contract to them, and they signed the contract Monday. I just need to present the contract to you folks for review and your signature today if you approve.
Any questions? Anyone who would have for the sheriff regarding the contract? Is there a motion to enter that agreement?
Come on.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Go ahead and enter the agreement with the sheriff's department as he's outlined with the city of Solomon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I don't believe we have any other business.
I'd like to bring in some of this.
Okay, well, I had, so go ahead.
It's going out by the order.
Sheriff, Sheriff Davis here. I want to bring up a couple of articles that were brought to my attention from taxpayers out here. And one was the purchase, or wanting to purchase another pickup truck. And just recently, in the last administration, they had a pickup truck. And the question was, why would you want to be buying another pickup truck? And I'll just let you elaborate on your vehicle, why you're doing, what you're doing. Because I couldn't answer it, and that was so long ago to come up with that, you know. So go ahead, if you would please.
The previous pickup truck was purchased by the previous administration. It was not a lease package pickup truck. It was basically a personal vehicle that the sheriff's office bought. We were in COVID, and we were trying to get patrol cars to manage the fleet. Of course, everybody knows about the difficulties in getting vehicles. We had some vehicles that came available. So we offered to trade this vehicle in for that. We got pretty much, I think it's traded, we got pretty much the same amount as what we paid for the truck.
Yeah, I think so.
So we traded that truck in to get police vehicles for the patrolman. This year, we've decided that, you know, a pickup truck is a good use vehicle. We would like to have one pickup truck. Again, we're having trouble getting vehicles, as everybody is. We've got a police package vehicle available that is under the state contract price, and we can get it probably sooner than anybody else in the state can get it, I would imagine. So we decided to jump at the chance to get that pickup truck. That's going to be used for a criminal investigations unit truck. However, if we have to go pick up dogs or evidence, it's going to be available to all the patrolmen 24/7. So that's the only issue there, was just dealing with COVID and the availability of vehicles and cost savings. So.
I just have to say, I'm very pleased with the service that the sheriff's department is doing from Dixon County. But I would ask the taxpayers who are interested in questions like that to please come and attend the meetings here or live screen on the television screen there for us if you have questions. Because they're all valuable questions, we sure answer them. But some of these things that you're asking commissioners have taken place so long ago. Frankly, we've had so much on our plate, we don't remember some of that stuff. So, and I'll be the first to admit, I can't remember everything that we've done in transaction. But believe me, they're legitimate. So again, contact the sources when you have questions about it, if something is bothering you or you're interested in, and we'll sure get the answers for you.
Hey, go ahead, man. Well, I was just going to mention, and this was part of our discussion in our work-study session, but, and some of this we hear on the news, but also Derek mentioned that some of the materials and pesticides and so on, some of the increases in prices that we get. And I think we can always best prepare when, the more information that we have. And not just in that department, but I think maybe at a future work-study session. And I know Brad keeps on top of this and Janelle and department heads. But you know, if there's things that we need to know or take into consideration, because we do have materials that we buy, whether it's for roads, you know, out there. There's so much that we do, and some of the prices are changing. And so we just kind of need to stay on top of it and take that into consideration. Just don't want to get caught off guard, or six months from now, have some discussion. Just don't want to get caught off guard, or six months from now, have some discussion where it's like, well, you know, we saw that coming two or three months ago. And, and I know the rapidity of change is so quick now, that, that, that's a challenge. So go ahead, Craig.
I move adjourned.
Second that.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.